The delay, we just had to get some additional... We're all ready to go now. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the County Council meeting taking place on Wednesday, 16th of July 2025. This meeting is being held, it's a live broadcast, on our own YouTube channel. Can I extend a warm welcome to the members of the public attending and to those unviewing online. For those in attendance, you are very welcome to attend and observe proceedings, however, I request politely that you do not disrupt the meeting. Could I ask everyone in the chamber to switch off or make silent their mobile phones and all other electronic devices? Before we commence with the items of business on the agenda, it is with great sadness to formally report the death of the former Durham County councillor, Jan Misall. Jan served as the county councillor for Peter Lee West on the county council from 2013 to 2017. So can I ask you all to stand for a moment's silence? Thank you. Thanks very much. Right, to business. Item one, the minutes. I have a mover, the councillor husband, and the second councillor Grimes to confirm the minutes of the meeting held on the 21st of May 2025.
Chair would like to move.
Chair second the minutes.
Are the minutes agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Secondly, item two, declarations of interest. Does any member wish to declare an interest in relation to any item of business on the agenda? No? Okay. Well, obviously nobody, right. Before we start, apparently I'm allowed to make some small announcements. In my role as chairman of the county council, I'm very privileged to visit various functions. And in the last week, I've attended two that I really was impressed by and heartened by. One was the citizenship ceremony at the Stori, where we had 63 people who for three years had to apply and work through an application system to become citizens of the United Kingdom. These people were brilliant people, articulate, and very proud of the fact that they were now citizens of the United Kingdom. And I was heartened by the age group of them, from very young people to very old people. But all of them had brilliant experiences to provide for the future of County Durham. And the second one, and you'll meet some of these people later today, I met a wonderful group of young people from the corporate parenting unit, who were, again, very articulate, very knowledgeable of what they want to do and how they want to achieve it. And if we can, with a little bit of help, help them on their way up the ladder of success, I'm hoping that they'll make a success of everything they do. They were really excellent young people. So now can I extend a warm welcome to councillor Terry Rooney. Terry is the newly elected member for the Benfield Electoral Division. Yeah, thank you. I couldn't see you there, sorry. Colleagues, colleagues, I'd just like to remind you, a robust debate is part of the democratic process. So I would ask members to respect the views of others and to not point fingers during this debate. I would also remind members that it is not appropriate to shout at other members across the floor during debate. We have microphones which allow everyone to be heard, so please use them when speaking. Where points of order are raised, once a ruling has been made on advice of the director of legal and democratic services, it will not be revisited. We then move on to item number four, which is the leader's report. So can I invite the leader of the county council to present his report? Councillor husband?
Thank you, Chair. And good morning, everyone. Today's full council meeting is the last before the summer recess, and hope you're all able to take some time to rest before we begin the cycle of meetings come September. It's been an incredibly busy few months, and there's been a great deal to learn, both in the officers working hard to deliver the many services the council provides and in the communities we represent. Talking to residents and finding out what matters to them will always be the driving force behind everything we do. That's why next week, Cabinet will be asked to give the go-ahead to a major public consultation over a new set of priorities for the council. We've set out our ambitions, which focus on delivering efficient and effective services, providing excellent care and support for children, adults, families, ensuring communities are safe and thriving, and supercharging County Durham's economy. Ultimately, we want to meet the needs of our communities while ensuring resources are spent wisely and well. This is the start of a new era, and I'm looking forward to working with you all to build a bright future for County Durham. Thank you.
Do any members have any questions on this report? Councillor Craig Martin?
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Craig Martin of North Lodge in Chelsey Street. Just want to start and really welcome the fact that you've opened up and you've set these priorities really early on and be very clear about what your administration's going to be about. Just leading on to my question, how will you ensure that your priorities, funding, any budgetary cuts that might come along the way, will be shared out equally and fairly across all of the towns across County Durham? And how do you expect us as the opposition to measure you against those ambitions and how we should hold you accountable to those ambitions throughout the next couple of years?
Thank you, Councillor Martin. Obviously aware there's a workshop being held directly after this session, which I hope you'll attend, which focuses on the county plan and implementation of the county plan over the next four years. To help answer your question, I suggest you vote for our first motion, which will give you a very particular focus on the care emergencies that we currently face in County Durham. Anything you do require thereafter, we can always write a formal response in writing for you. Thank you.
Have you got anything else you want to say, Councillor Martin? Any sort of end question?
We're very generous.
You're very generous. No, I just want to say thank you very much for the response.
Thank you. I can now call on Councillor Mark Wilks, please.
Thanks, Chair. It's a really brief one to the leader, Chair. It's been made, I've been made aware this morning that there's been some changes at Durham Bus Station, and you mentioned about wanting to have a safe and thriving communities. There is some concern that apparently security is being withdrawn at Durham Bus Station, and I wondered if it possible for you to just bear in mind that the reason for that security is because we do have antisocial behaviour issues at the bus station, and perhaps we could have a discussion about this at some point, because there are concerns from local residents about that.
Thank you, Councillor Wilks. This has not been a cabinet decision, so obviously we'll pick up with officers to understand the reasoning behind such a decision and obviously reply in writing. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Has anybody else got any questions before we move on? Right, can I ask the council to note the report, please? Thank you. We now move on to an important part of the day, questions from the public. Three questions have been received for today's meeting, and I will invite the questioners to put their question and then ask the relevant portfolio holder to respond. I will take the questions in the order at which they were received, and there is no provision for a supplementary question, and there is no debate in respect of questions. The first question, which I understand I have to read out myself, is from Miss Rochelle Lenehre, and it concerns the following. As reformed county councillors for same division have publicly declared they will not attend diversity, equality and inclusion training, including any such British anti-man and anti-woman nonsense, can the leader of the council explain why certain reformed councillors are refusing to attend mandatory equality, diversity and inclusion, and how this refusal may impact on their ability to make legally informed and compliant decisions during committee meetings, particularly when matters concerned diversity, equality and inclusion are discussed? It's quite a question. Can I ask the leader of the county council to respond, please, to this question?
Thank you for the question. Well firstly, the training module's been removed, so there's no training. There is no requirement in law for councillors to complete equality, diversity and inclusion training. Councillors have been informed of their responsibilities in relation to the public sector equality duty as part of their member reduction sessions, as a member of code of conduct and how the council works. Where relevant, decision-making reports consider equality and diversity implications and include equality impact assessments, ensuring that the council's statutory duties are complied with. I've asked the monitoring officer to consider what arrangements can be put in place to assist councillors to discharge the public sector equality duty.
Thanks, Councillor husband. Thanks for that. Question two, can I invite Dr Brown to ask his question, please?
Thank you, Chair, and good morning. I'm here this morning as the chair of the East Durham Community Standing Together campaign, which stands against the expansion of HMOs across the East Durham communities. And my question is the new council has had time to reflect and take stock of some of the key priorities moving forward. So are all members in a position to commit to a policy that ensures that HMOs developments across the county will be subject to planning control via an Article Four direction?
Thanks very much, Dr Brown. Can I invite Councillor Lindsay Fox, Cabinet Portfolio for Economy and Partnerships, to respond, please?
Thank you, Chair. So the new council has had time to reflect and take stock of some of the key priorities moving forward. So members are in a position to start to respond, so thank you for your question. Although the council recognises that houses in multiple occupation can provide more affordable forms of accommodation for a wide range of groups, it is also aware of the issues that can arise as a result of over-concentration of HMOs within an area. We acknowledge how worrying it can be for members of the community to find new HMOs due to safety fears regarding potential occupants. This can be because of noise, the general appearance of properties, refuse management and parking issues as well. It can also lead to a loss of family housing and impacts on community cohesion due to the presence of a more transient population. Therefore, the council will be proposing an Article Four direction to cover the whole of the County Durham, excluding those areas where one is already in place...
People articulate and very proud of the fact that they were now citizens of the United Kingdom. And I was heartened by the age group of them, from very young people to very old people. But all of them had brilliant experiences to provide for the future of County Durham. And the second one, and you'll meet some of these people later today. I met a wonderful group of young people from the corporate parenting unit, who were, again, very articulate, very knowledgeable of what they want to do and how they want to achieve it. And if we can, with a little bit of help, help them on their way up the ladder of success. I'm hoping that they'll make a success of everything they do. They were really excellent young people. So now can I extend a warm welcome to councillor Terry Rooney. Terry is the newly elected member for the Benfield Electoral Division. Yeah, thank you. I couldn't see you there, sorry. My colleagues, colleagues, I'd just like to remind you, a robust debate is part of the democratic process. So I would ask members to respect the views of others and to not point fingers during this debate. I would also remind members that it is not appropriate to shout at other members across the floor during debate. We have microphones which allow everyone to be heard, so please use them when speaking. Where points of order are raised, once a ruling has been made on advice of the Director of Legal and Democratic Services, it will not be revisited. We then move on to item number four, which is the Leader's Report. So can I invite the leader of the County Council to present his report? Councillor Husband.
Thank you, Chair. And good morning, everyone. Today's full council meeting is the last before the summer recess. And I hope you're all able to take some time to rest before we begin the cycle of meetings come September. It's been an incredibly busy few months and there's been a great deal to learn, both in the officers working hard to deliver the many services the council provides and from the communities re-represent. Talking to residents and finding out what matters to them will always be the driving force behind everything we do. That's why next week Cabinet will be asked to give the go-ahead to a major public consultation over a new set of priorities for the council. We've set out our ambitions, which focus on delivering efficient and effective services, providing excellent care and support for children, adults, families, ensuring communities are safe and thriving, and supercharging County Durham's economy. Ultimately, we want to meet the needs of our communities while ensuring resources are spent wisely and well. This is the start of a new era, and I'm looking forward to working with you all to build a bright future for County Durham. Thank you.
Do any members have any questions on this report? Councillor Craig Martin?
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Craig Martin of North Lodge in Chelsey Street. And just want to start and really welcome the fact that you've opened up and you've set these priorities really early on and be very clear about what your administration's going to be about. And just leading on to my question, how will you ensure that your priorities, funding, any budgetary cuts that might come along the way, will be shared out equally and fairly across all of the towns across County Durham? And how do you expect us as the opposition to measure you against those ambitions and how we should hold you accountable to those ambitions throughout the next couple of years?
Thank you, councillor Martin. Obviously aware there's a workshop being held directly after this session, which I hope you'll attend, which focuses on the county plan and the implementation of the county plan over the next four years. To help answer your question, I suggest you vote for our first motion, which will give you a very particular focus on the care emergencies that we currently face in County Durham. Anything you do require thereafter, we can always write a formal response in writing for you. Thank you.
Have you got anything else you want to say, councillor Martin? Any sort of end of question? We're very generous.
You're very generous. No, I just want to say thank you very much for the response.
Thank you. Can I call on councillor Mark Wilks, please?
Thanks, Chair. It's a really brief one to the leader, Chair. It's been made, I've been made aware this morning that there's been some changes at Durham Bus Station. And you mentioned about wanting to have a safe and thriving communities. There is some concerns that apparently security is being withdrawn at Durham Bus Station. And I wondered if it possible for you to just bear in mind that the reason for that security is because we do have antisocial behaviour issues at the bus station. And perhaps we could have a discussion about this at some point, because there are concerns from local residents about that.
Thank you, councillor Wilks. This has not been a cabinet decision, so obviously we'll pick up with officers to understand the reasoning behind such a decision and obviously reply in writing. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Has anybody else got any questions before we move on? Right, can I ask the council to note the report, please? We now move on to an important part of the day, questions from the public. Three questions have been received for today's meeting. And we'll invite the questioners to put their question and then ask the relevant portfolio holder to respond. I will take the questions in the order at which they were received. And there is no provision for a supplementary question, and there is no debate in respect of questions. The first question, which I understand I have to read out myself, is from Miss Rochelle Lenea. And it concerns the following. As Reform County Councils for same division have publicly declared, they will not attend diversity, equality and inclusion training, including any such British anti-man and anti-woman nonsense. Can the leader of the council explain why certain Reform councillors are refusing to attend mandatory equality, diversity and inclusion? And how this refusal may impact on their ability to make legally informed and compliant decisions during committee meetings? Particularly when matters concerned diversity, equality and inclusion are discussed? It's quite a question. Can I ask the leader of the County Council to respond, please, to this question?
Thank you for the question. Well firstly, the training module's been removed, so there's no training. There is no requirement in law for councillors to complete equality, diversity and inclusion training. Councillors have been informed of their responsibilities in relation to the public sector equality duty as part of their member reduction sessions, as a member of code of conduct and how the council works. Where relevant, decision-making reports consider equality and diversity implications and include equality impact assessments, ensuring that the council's statutory duties are complied with. I've asked the monitoring officer to consider what arrangements can be put in place to assist councillors to discharge the public sector equality duty.
Thanks, councillor Husband. Thanks for that. Question two, can I invite Dr Brown to ask his question, please?
Thank you, Chair, and good morning. I'm here this morning as the Chair of the East Durham Community Standing Together Campaign, which stands against the expansion of HMOs across the East Durham communities. And my question is the new council has had time to reflect and take stock of some of the key priorities moving forward. So are all members in a position to commit to a policy that ensures that HMOs developments across the county will be subject to planning control via an Article Four direction?
Thanks very much, Dr Brown. Can I invite councillor Lindsay Fox, Cabinet Portfolio for Economy and Partnerships, to respond, please?
Thank you, Chair. So the new council has had time to reflect and take stock of some of the key priorities moving forwards. So members are in a position to start to respond, so thank you for your question. Although the council recognises that houses in multiple occupation can provide more affordable forms of accommodation for a wide range of groups, it is also aware of the issues that can arise as a result of over-concentration of HMOs within an area. We acknowledge how worrying it can be for members of the community to find new HMOs due to safety fears regarding potential occupants. This can be because of noise, the general appearance of properties, refuse management and parking issues as well. It can also lead to a loss of family housing and impacts on community cohesion due to the presence of a more transient population. Therefore, the council will be proposing an Article Four direction to cover the whole of the County Durham, excluding those areas where one is already in place at a cabinet meeting on the 21st of July, 2025. This will remove permitted development rights under planning legislation for changes of use from dwelling houses to small between three and six resident HMOs. The Article Four must be subject to a consultation period of not less than 21 days. A notification must be given to the Secretary of State. However, the council is confident that Article Four is justified and will help address the increasing number of HMOs seen in County Durham in recent years.
Thanks very much, councillor Fox. We have now question three, which can I invite Mr Anderson to ask his question, please?
Thank you, Chair. What will the council do to revitalise the night-time economy throughout the county?
Again, can I invite councillor Lindsay Fox, Cabinet Portfolio Holder for Economy and Partnerships, to respond, please?
Thank you, Chair. The night-time economy is an important part of County Durham's wider economic ambitions, and it plays a key role in supporting local jobs and contributing to the visitor economy that sustains nearly 14,000 roles across the county, while helping to enhance the cultural vibrancy of our towns and communities. Throughout our attractions and events, it also supports tourism and the wider regeneration of our town centres. However, we recognise that this sector faces challenges which include variable levels of evening footfall in some areas and public perceptions around the quality and variety of the night-time offer. To address these issues, the council is taking several steps to revitalise the night-time economy, such as supporting local businesses, delivering inclusive events, improving public spaces, working in partnership and supporting the licensed trade by working with legitimate businesses to promote and maintain high standards. Furthermore, as we roll out our strategic place plans across the county, we will develop tailored solutions for each area, which include measures such as activating under-used public spaces for evening events and cultural programming. It also includes expanding accommodation and hospitality to support overnight stays and increased visitor spend and encouraging extended opening hours for retail and cultural venues to boost evening activity. Through these actions, we will aim to create a thriving, inclusive and sustainable night-time economy that benefits residents, businesses and visitors alike. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks very much, councillor Fox. Appreciate that. So that concludes the public questions for today's meeting. Thank you to those people who submitted questions and for those attending the meeting. The questions and responses will be posted on the council website following this meeting. And each questioner will also receive a written response following this meeting. We then move on to item number six, petitions. As far as I'm aware, there are no petitions for consideration. Item number seven is the report from Cabinet. Can I ask the leader of the County Council to present the report?
Chair, can you table the report as written, please?
And ask the council to note it. Thanks very much. Item eight, Corporate Parenting Panel Annual Report of 2024-2025. And may I extend a really warm welcome to Courtney Moore and Louis Archdeacon for this meeting and ask them, along with the head of Children's Social Care, to present their Corporate Parenting Panel Annual Report for 2024-2025.
There's a big section on the Children in Care Council because that's an area that we're really, really proud of. And the Children in Care Council plays a huge part in the Corporate Parenting Panel. And we have co-opted representatives, who are these two at the minute, who are incredible, sitting on the panel. Now, our Children in Care Council have identified six priorities for them to focus on for the next year. So they tell us, number one, they want to feel safe. Number two, they want good emotional and physical wellbeing. Number three, they want to have positive people in their lives. Number four, they want to be listened to. Number five, they want to understand things better. And number six, which is my favourite, is they want to be the best they can. There's a section on protected characteristics because in January 2025, we brought a report to council where agreement was given to adopt care experiences as a protected characteristic. And we've just started the work to make sure that's integrated into our decision-making, to demonstrate that Durham cares and the Durham family supports and champions our young people. There's so many achievements in the report. And some of those achievements include being awarded outstanding in our recent ILAX inspection. We've made lots of changes to the way we use language to reflect what young people feel are important. The success of the Education Fund Fund, which has been a huge success. Our entry into care supply packs. The good luck cards we've sent to every child who's had an exam, whether that's SATs or GCSEs or A-levels, who are care-experienced. And we've also this year had a really successful art exhibition at Bishop Auckland Town Hall. Twenty-three of our young people produced 27 pieces in that exhibition, and it was really special. So I hope you'll appreciate the support we offer. And I hope you'll all use the annual report and what you hear today to champion our young people and consider them in any decisions that you take as you would consider the impacts on your own children and grandchildren. So I'll have to pass over to the most important people now, which is Courtney and Louis, who are going to say a few words.
Hello, my name is Courtney. I'm 18. I have a job. I live independently and I'm trying to be a paramedic. I'm also a care-leaver who sits on the Corporate Parenting Panel.
My name is Louis. I've been in foster care for four years and I've been part of the Children in Care Council for two. This is the first time I've spoke to so many people who can make a difference to young people and children's lives, especially children, young people in care across County Durham.
I'd like to echo what Rachel said about protected characteristics. I think this can make young people more confident with what they do in their daily lives. Specifically, when it comes to being employed. I know when I was trying to find a job, I was... When I took being care-experienced out of my CV and out of my interviews, I found I had six interviews back-to-back and I got a job within the same week. Before that, I'd been on a job hunt for eight months, which is why that was such an important thing for protected characteristics.
This is the first time, this is my first time here to speak. I'm sure it's probably the same for some of you over the last few months. But we're all here for the same reasons, and it's to improve the happiness, wellbeing and life in general for children and kids in care. I believe that next year, we can make this year's Corporate Parenting Report even better by working together. And I'm also going to be making County Durham better for children and kids in care and leaving care. I'm grateful to be working alongside all of you to make the difference. And thank you for allowing me to say these words.
I feel I know who's responsible for my care and the people who are on the Corporate Parenting Panel. This has given me confidence to ask the questions I want and know that I'll be heard. And my opinion will be improving the experience of other young people and children who are in care through no fault of their own. Children and young people in care are often made to feel like they don't belong. When I go to Corporate Parenting Panel, I feel like my voice is, it matters and it makes a difference.
I did say they were wonderful. And if there's anybody can put Louis in touch with anybody who does plumbing, we'd really appreciate it. Because the lad's desperate to be an apprentice plumber. Can I invite the Chair of the Corporate Parenting Panel, councillor Safran Sims-Briden, to speak at this point?
Hi, I'm councillor Sims-Briden, elected member for Durham and Pomp Valley. And now I can say I'm very privileged to be the Chair of the Corporate Parenting Panel. And thank you for presenting today. I'm here to present the Corporate Parenting Annual Report for endorsement. Although I wasn't Chair at the time of the report, I think we can all agree, after it's just been presented, that it's such a valuable resource. And the scope of the work undertaken by the services to support young people and care leavers is just absolutely incredible and truly inspiring for all of us. I'd like to take a moment just to thank everyone from across the services for their ongoing support and commitment to everything they do every day. The annual report is a great and positive resource, but I want every councillor in this room to please use it not just as a summary of achievements, but to actually recognise the hard work that's been happening every year, and we can only improve. Please share it and advocate for the voices of the future, the young people here today and those throughout our services and throughout County Durham. As Chair of the Corporate Parenting Panel, I'm committed to continuing this momentum, ensuring the best possible experiences and outcomes for all our young people in our services. I present the Corporate Parenting Panel Annual Report 2023-2024 for endorsement. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Do we have any questions regarding this report? Councillor Wilks?
Thank you, Chair. It's not so much a question, although I would like to thank Courtney and Louis and all our young people for what they do and for coming along to meetings and for getting involved. What I simply wanted to say, Chair, was that recently, just before the election, we lost councillor Mamie Simmons, who was Chair of Corporate Parenting and had done a huge amount for over two decades on fostering and working with young people. And I just wanted to say thanks. She's not here, but we need to say thank you to her for what she did. She was amazing in that role. Also, thank you to Michelle Walton, who stepped in and took up the Chair's role while Mamie was ill. I think she would have found it absolutely amazing to have discovered, if she had been able to, that we'd now got outstanding status as a council. And yeah, that's all I wanted to say, Chair. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Wilks. Even though it wasn't a question, I appreciate the sentiment. Can I now call on councillor Cathy Hunt, Cabinet Portfolio Holder for the Children and Young Persons Services?
Thank you, Chair. And firstly, thank you very much, Louis and Courtney. Fantastic job. Very well done indeed. Wouldn't know you hadn't done it before. I'm councillor Cathy Hunt, elected member for Wellington and Homewood Division and portfolio holder for Children and Young People Services. I previously sat on the Corporate Parenting Panel and was moved at how powerful and emotional these meetings are. The reports and lived experience stories demonstrate the commitment of listening to our children and young people and continuing to make the changes to improve the outcomes and shape their lives. I would like to thank the officers and young people who put in so much work to bring the information to us and ask everyone here today as corporate parents to continue to champion the children in our care and ask yourselves three key questions in the role as an elected member. One, if this was my child, would it be good enough for them? Two, if I were this child, would it be good enough for me? And three, what can we do better? As portfolio holder for Children and Young People Services, I'm committed to making the changes for the children and young people of County Durham. I look forward to receiving the next Corporate Parenting Panel Annual Report to see what more can be done to support the experienced young people, the care-experienced young people. I would also like to put on record my thanks to Martin Stilton for all he has done for the children and young people during this time in Durham. Martin, it's been a pleasure working with you. I don't know if he's here. Martin, it's been a pleasure working with you during this time in Durham as your role as Director of Children and Young People Services. Thank you. Your new role is their loss, and our, sorry, our loss and their gain. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Do we have any questions? Any speakers? Right. So can I ask the council to endorse the Corporate Parenting Panel Annual Report, please? Thank you. Thanks very much again Courtney and Louis. Best of luck. If we can move on to item nine, which is the Treasury Management Final Outrun 2024-2025. And can I ask the head of Corporate Finance and Commercial Services to present the report?
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, everybody. I'm Rob Davisworth. I'm the head of Corporate Finance. This report is for noting by County Council. And it provides an overview of our treasury management activity and arrangements for the financial year 24-25. And it's a position statement as at the 31st of March 2025. And it reflects the council's arrangements for cash flow management and borrowing arrangements which underpin the capital programme of the County Council. This is a key element of the medium-term financial strategy of the council. It has an impact on our revenue budgets. It also affects how we fund and pay for our very extensive and ambitious capital programme. The report and the council's treasury management position were scrutinised by Audit Committee at its meeting on the 27th of June 2025, and the Chair of the Audit Committee will speak after myself. Just to clarify, the treasury management arrangements we have in place are effectively to manage our cash flow arrangements and our borrowing arrangements for the financing of the capital programme. Consideration of this report meets the requirements of our regulators and the government. And the report includes details of our performance on treasury management arrangements. And we have a series of indicators which are included in the report to show our performance. And these indicators were approved as part of the budget-setting process for 24-25 back in February 2024. The table in paragraph 27 provides a summary of our overall treasury management position. County Council will see that as at the 31st of March 2025, we had a total debt outstanding position of £435 million. we had a total debt outstanding position of £435 million and cash investments of £74 million. So therefore, our net debt position at the end of March 2025 was £361 million. That compares with our position at the prior year, where our net debt position at the end of March 24 was £165 million lower. We have taken an additional £23 million worth of borrowing during the financial year, but we have run down our cash balances down by around £143 million. And that's a strategy that we've employed to effectively run down our cash balances in lieu of borrowing at a later stage whilst interest rates remained somewhat high. Therefore, at some point in the next few months, in the next year, we will need to borrow to catch that position up. And we have an underborrowed position against our underlying need to borrow of around £159 million. So that will need to be addressed. It's also worth drawing to the County Council's attention that as part of the existing capital programme, that programme is predicated on around £400 million worth of borrowing, which will need to be taken out in the next three or four years. But we are currently undergoing a very extensive review, working in partnership with the Cabinet of the existing capital programme and the borrowing commitments that underpin that programme. The council's borrowing activity during the last financial year is set out in sections 30 to 38. New borrowing loans were taken out to the tune of £60 million. And that reflected the need to fund the underlying capital programme and to maintain our liquidity levels. We also undertook some debt refinancing during the year. We held some private sector loans with Phoenix Bank, which is a subsidiary of Aberdeen Investments. We refinanced about £58 million and we generated interest rate savings of £400,000 per annum, which have been reflected in the latest medium term financial strategy. The interest which we pay on that debt is very reasonable and competitive. On average, it's a rate of 3.31%. In paragraphs 39 to 56, there's an overview of our other external debt and long term liability arrangements. Those mainly relate to our private finance initiative liabilities in relation to three schools in the county, a series of finance leases which we hold for vehicles and land and building leases. And we also have to take into account with more scrutiny a number of contractual arrangements we have where there is an implicit lease arrangement, where we effectively have a long term liability for the use of a particular asset. And under new accounting standards, we have to bring those assets which we use and the associated liabilities with those assets onto our balance sheet. And we've done a very extensive piece of work, which recent audit committees have been extensively briefed on to undertake that assessment. The accounting, sorry, there's also an overview of our investment activity arrangements in paragraph 70 to 74. And the table at 71 provides a breakdown of the types of financial institutions, the lengths of investments and the interest rates which we secure on those investments. County Council should know that during the year, we reduced the limits by which we hold investments with counterparty financial institutions because we've run our cash balances down so much that we didn't want to put place, hold a large proportion of our cash with a small handful of financial institutions. And those changes were approved in the last County Council in December 2024. All investments undertaken in year and held at the 31st of March 2025 remain in line with our Treasury Management strategy and in line with our associated policies. Paragraph 75 onwards of the report set out various performance indicators in relation to our Treasury Management activities. And these give the County Council a flavour of the level of debt we hold, how much borrowing we had to undertake to fund last year's capital programme, the costs of servicing that debt as a proportion of our revenue budget, the level of income that we generate as a result of our cash flow investments and other investments. So these are a series of indicators which are agreed by Audit Committee and approved by County Council on an annual basis. In summary, I appreciate this is a very technical report. It's been gone over with fine toothcomb by Audit Committee. The council remains in a very strong financial position in terms of its Treasury Management arrangements and position. And members can take comfort from the fact that the council has continued to comply with its Treasury Management strategies and policies and will continue to meet all the requirements of the Prudential Code. The recommendations are for County Council to note the report. Thank you.
Thanks very much for that. Now, can I invite the Chair of the Audit Committee, councillor Nick Brown, to speak regarding this report?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to thank Rob for the update, and I'm going to reiterate a few of his comments. This is an update on our Treasury Management activity in 2024-25. And I'd like to thank him for the information setting out our position as of 31st of March 2025, which the Audit Committee scrutinised on the 27th of June, for which we received some in depth briefings and training on these technical matters. Now, it's noted across the last financial year, the council has fully complied with all the requirements of the Treasury Management Policy and Strategy agreed in February 2024. The report sets out details of the work undertaken in year to ensure that we fully comply with International Financial Reporting Standards 16, which comes into force in 2025 for local authorities and which has been fully reflected in the draft statement of accounts that were published on the 27th of June and which we will be considering at the Audit Committee on the 31st of July. If any councillors have any questions about any of this, they are more than welcome to come and speak to me to discuss it. And with that, Chair, I would like to ask the council to note the report.
Thanks very much, councillor Brown. So does anybody have any questions regarding this report? No? So can I ask the council to note this report, please? Thanks very much. Thanks very much. Item 10, the Annual Report of the Standards Committee 2024-2025. Can I ask the Director of Legal and Democratic Services to present this report, please?
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, members. The report provides an overview of the Standards Committee's activity for the period 24 to 25 and helps demonstrate what the council has been doing to discharge its statutory duty to promote and maintain high standards of conduct. The report follows a similar format every year and starts with setting out the membership of the committee for the reporting period as well as the independent persons who've supported the committee for the period. The report sets out the terms of reference for the committee for consideration alongside the work programme for 2425, which is at Appendix 2. Throughout the year, the committee continued to receive reports on standards and governance issues nationally and the LGA's Debate Not Hate campaign, which resulted in a recommendation that council adopt a zero approach to abuse policy last year. The committee also reviewed and made recommendations to the council about the publication of members' home addresses on the Public Register of Interests. The committee has also met informally to consider the government strengthening the Standards Framework consultation. We await the outcome of that in due course. The report also includes a summary of the Member Code of Conduct complaints received with a comparison to the previous year, and that covers both County Councillor and Town and Parish councils. And the report also includes a breakdown of the time spent and costs incurred in dealing with those complaints. And finally, the report touches on the work programme for the current year, which was approved by the Standards Committee on the 9th of June. Chair, the recommendation is at paragraph 5 for council to note the report.
Thanks for that, Helen. So can I now invite councillor Catherine Rooney to speak? She's the former Chair of the Standards Committee for 2024-2025.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Catherine Rooney, Constable North Division. I'm pleased to present the Annual Report of the Standards Committee for the period 2024 to 2025. The committee's work programme, which is consistent with the terms of reference set out in the report at paragraph 11, is attached at Appendix 2 to the report. The committee has continued to monitor standards and governance issues nationally. Since the council signed the Local Government Association Debate Not Hate Statement in January 2023, the committee has kept up to date with developments in relation to the Debate Not Hate Campaign and ensured that the council's arrangements continue to reflect best practice. I am pleased that the committee was able to support the council's proactive approach in relation to members' home addresses pending the introduction of legislation, which will mean members do not have to publish their home addresses on the Public Register of Interests. The committee also helped shape the council's response to the strengthening Standards Framework earlier this year. In respect of complaints, members will see from the report that there was a slight increase in number of complaints received in 2024 to 25. In terms of outcomes, the most significant change since last year is the relation to the number of cases which were withdrawn or rejected. None of the complaints received for the period of the report were referred to a hearing panel on the committee. The report also includes a breakdown of the costs to the council of dealing with Member Code of Conduct matters. I would like to thank the Monitoring Officer and her team for their continued work with the committee in assisting to ensure the high standards are achieved by all local elected members. I would also like to thank the members of the committee and independent persons for their support during the term of the committee. I ask the council to note the report.
Thanks very much, councillor. Can I now invite the current Chair of the Standards Committee, councillor Kate Rowland, to speak?
Thank you, Chair. As the new Chair of the Standards Committee under a new administration, I'm grateful for the work of the previous Standards Committee over the last year. In relation to the work programme and other recommendations set out in Appendix 3, we note the report. However, given that we are a new administration which has had no input into these proposals, we reserve the right to review and potentially amend proposals in the week ahead. I look forward to working with the new committee and all my colleagues with a view to improving the standards process moving forward.
Thanks very much, councillor. Do we have any questions regarding this report? A gentleman at the back is... Oh, sorry, councillor Shuttlerworth.
Yes, Chair, my device isn't working there. Given that we've had 11 complaints made in 2024 and 17 in 2025 against County Councils, the fact we've got 126 since the elections, can I just ask how we're going to deal with all that? Because going forward, there's probably going to be 500.
Do we have anybody to reply to that one?
Chair, I'll take it. The usual team will be applying the procedure in the usual way. Whilst there has been an increase in the number of complaints that have been received, a significant number of those don't encage the Member Code of Conduct, so they are dealt with quite swiftly. But just to note, the report is for the 2425 period.
Councillor Moise, please.
Thanks, Chair. Talking about this report and only this report and the costs, do the costs of £44,000, £40,000, is that all of the costs? Is it a true reflection? And is senior management time included in these costs? Because there was an article in the Northern Echo regarding a parish council code of conduct complaint that had costs in excess of £60,000. Perhaps I've got it wrong, or the Northern Echo have it wrong. But is this a true reflection of costs? Are senior officers' time allocated to the code of conduct costs as well? Thank you, Chair.
Chair, the costs are calculated in relation to the legal officer time that's spent in relation to particular complaints. There will be an element of my time or my deputy's time in regard to that, although the vast majority of work is done by less senior officers. And we get involved on a limited basis or on a supervisory basis or indeed when there are issues that warrant either the Monitoring Officer or Deputy Monitoring Officer to be involved. The costs don't include time for officers in committee services and admin staff that support the process because they don't time record in the same way that the legal services do. And with regard to the Rommel Kirk costs that were reported in the media, the figure is accurate, but there was a breakdown given between the internal costs and the external legal costs that we incurred. I can't recall the breakdown off the top of my head, but I will provide that to members after the meeting.
Thanks very much, Helen. Councillor Shuttlerworth, just regarding your question. In a former life, I was always told, if you get more complaints, it means you're actually doing your job correctly. So it'll be interesting to see what happens.
Well, when I get a break, excuse me, I'll just come back on that. When I get a break down through there, I'll be firing the bullet at where it's aimed at. Thank you.
I didn't quite get that, councillor, but thanks very much for the point. We now have councillor Sexton.
Thank you, Chair. I wasn't going to ask a question on this, but seeing as councillor Shuttlerworth has decided to fire a shot across the bows. I'm like councillor Moise, I'm struggling to understand the numbers. Why aren't we capturing all the numbers? So we're getting a true view. And I hope the new Chair of Standards and the new administration incorporate this moving forward. It is imperative that we understand how much money is being spent on standards. And also in relation to councillor Shuttlerworth's concern over the amount of the numbers that we're getting, I'd also like to ask, is the threshold appropriate? Example, does almost a year to reach no further action on a smiley face on your personal Facebook account, is that time and length warranted? Is it fair to the administration, the taxpayer and the person who's actually been, has that allegation against them? Thank you, Chair.
I'm not in a position to comment on particular examples that I'm not familiar with, with passage of time and haven't had advance notice of. But it wouldn't be appropriate to comment on specific examples in this meeting in any event. With regard to the process, the process is consistent with that, the processes that are adopted elsewhere. If the code is engaged, then we need to consider it through the initial assessment process. The vast majority of complaints are dealt with at that initial assessment process. But sometimes things take longer for a variety of reasons. That could be the response times of the subject member. It could be the response times of complainants. It could be the need to speak to an independent person and their availability. Previously, we did have an absence of an independent person due to ill health and we had a period of time where we didn't have one, so that did build in delays. But I think the process is appropriate. If the code is engaged, we are required to deal with them and we deal with the vast majority of them under that initial assessment.
Chair, could I do a point of personal expression and a follow up, please, on that?
I'm sorry, councillor Sexton, there's a councillor over there who wants to speak.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Pete Malloy, Spennymore Division. Just a bit of clarification on the internal costs incurred. Can you tell me with regards to parish and town councils, are any costs passed on to them for having to do the work? Thank you.
Can you knock your microphone off, please? Thank you. No, the County Council, as the principal council, is responsible for dealing with Member Code of Conduct complaints against parish and town councillors. There is no provision for the council to recover its costs of doing so. And that was a representation that the previous Standards Committee and the council made in response to the strengthening standards and conduct framework, was that actually there should be at least a discretionary power for local, for principal authorities to recharge town and parish councils for the costs incurred in dealing with Member Code of Conduct matters. But that would require legislative change. So we'll wait and see what happens with the consultation process. And once we get the outcome of the consultation, that will be reported to Standards Committee. And any consequent changes to the procedures will need to come through council for approval.
Thank you.
Councillor Sexton, if you can now make your point, please.
Yeah, just to come back and thanks, Helen. I'm glad you mentioned passage of time. Maybe that can be taken into consideration because there are outstanding allegations going on many, many, many lengths of period of time. So if officers can't recall, how are others supposed to recall? Thank you.
Can I just remind councillors, when I ask if you've got any questions about the reports, they actually are questions and are not just framed as some sort of statement. So I'd just like to remind you, please. And now, does anybody wish to speak regarding this report? No? Can I ask the council to note... Can I ask the council to note this report then, please? Thanks very much. Item eleven, it's an overview and scrutiny annual report 2024/2025. Can I invite councillor Crewe, former Chair of the Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Management Board of 2024/2025, to speak on this annual report, please?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm pleased to be able to present the full council this morning the scrutiny annual report for 2024/25, which sets out some of the work of the scrutiny committees and the scrutiny management board have undertaken over the past year. And I'm grateful to the current Chair of the Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Management Board for the opportunity as the outgoing Chair to table this year's annual report. As is good practice, each of the committee's work programmes over the past year were carried out in accordance with the four principles of effective scrutiny. And they are to provide a constructive critical friend challenge, primarily to the executive, to amplify the voices and the concerns of members of the public, to improve public services and to be led by independent-minded people who take responsibility for their role. In other words, scrutiny is strictly non-party political in its approach. As ever, the scrutiny annual report for this year reflects every one of those four principles and they underpin all the work that they've done. The report in front of members this morning describes just a few of the issues considered by scrutiny over the past year. And while this is a respective look at the work of scrutiny, I look forward to playing a role in scrutiny in years to come. Chair, if there's one message I'd like to emphasise today, it's the importance of scrutiny and the impartial role that it plays in any well-run local authority. Central to this is the notion of parity of esteem, which when applied correctly ensures a level playing field for scrutiny members. And we've worked hard over the years at Durham County Council to ensure that the esteem and the support given to the scrutiny function is equal to that afforded to the executive. And we found that this approach leads to much stronger policy development. The executive, of course, will have its priorities, it'll have its manifesto commitments to deliver, but if those policy decisions need to be fit for purpose, they need a strong and effective scrutiny function running alongside it. The scrutiny function committed to the four principles I've already outlined will ensure that policy decisions at the end of the process will be better informed, well-developed and open to the public for scrutiny and accountability. So it's of course, it's vital that all members of the thematic committees and the management board together make every effort to ensure that those principles endure over the course of this administration and remain an integral element of policy development. Chair, I don't intend to go through the report line by line. It's been published for over a week now and I think members have had sufficient opportunity to read up on it. So I would ask members this morning to accept the annual scrutiny report for 2024/25 as detailed in the agenda item in front of us. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks very much for all your hard work, councillor Crewe. Can I invite councillor Cook, current Chair of the Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Management Board, to speak, please?
Thank you, Chair. Members, my thanks firstly to the previous Chair for their reflections on last year's work. Scrutiny is the cornerstone of our democratic responsibility. As Chair, I want our scrutiny work to be purposeful, evidence-based and focused on the aspirations of those we represent. The 2025 to 26 work programme provides a framework to guide that mission. We should thank our overview and scrutiny officers for their work in putting them together for us. The work programme is a living document. It grows stronger with each member's input and reflects our shared commitment to accountability. In addition, we have the ambition and opportunity to deliver improvements to strengthen our scrutiny function. The council sets its key performance objectives to align with the County Durham Plan, which is currently in revision. This is an opportunity for scrutiny to ensure that the County Council's revised key performance objectives are composed in accordance with the SMART framework of specific, measurable, achievable, relevant and time-bound. And that the council provides overview and scrutiny, the details on the level setting and from that point forward, key performance objectives become the anchor of every report submitted to scrutiny. Likewise, we need documentation on the resources committed and the budgets allocated. Interim and quarterly reports need to convey the key performance indicators and metrics accumulated so that scrutiny can ascertain if the council is on track to reach its targets. Benchmarking against local and national peers is fine for comparisons, but lacks the data the scrutiny committees really need to assess performance. Local and national figures can fluctuate as easily as ours can and don't tell us the real story of how we are performing. We also aspire to have minutes circulated following meetings in five days or less, down from the forty-five days presently, so that action points can be worked on sooner with greater time to deliver outcomes. We intend to build insufficient flexibility to ensure that we can respond to reports sooner and that reports are provided in a timely fashion. Only with this level of clarity can we properly evaluate performance, ensure value for money and support progress where needed. These are the identified priorities for overview and scrutiny functions. To those here who are in scrutiny roles and the members in general, I urge you to bring your insight, your challenge and your commitment. Let's shape the programme together and with the people we serve at the heart of every decision. Chair, council, I ask for your support for this programme of work for the next year and your support in helping us strengthen the overview and scrutiny function. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Cook. Are there any questions on this report, please? Does any member wish to speak on this report? Councillor Lines?
Thank you, Chair. Chris Lines, Sedfield Division. Thank you to councillor Crewe and councillor Cook for their contributions. I support everything that councillor Crewe said and also there were some encouraging words from councillor Cook. In terms of the last year of scrutiny, I was vice-chair. The debate was sometimes robust, but it was always undertaken with civility. And crucially, scrutiny really did hold the executive to account, making substantive contributions that cabinet listened to and acted upon. I note that councillor Crewe's tenure as Chair lasted two years, two years during which the Chair of Scrutiny was from the main opposition party. And for the second of those years, that was as a result of a cross-chamber support at the annual meeting, which was an acknowledgement that it worked. That approach reflects recognised best practice for scrutiny nationally and indeed in the North East Combined Authority of which this council is a part. Therefore, I find it very disappointing that this approach has not been sustained under the new administration. Effectively, this administration is now marking its own homework and the role of scrutiny in holding this council to account will be weakened as a result of that. And I find that very worrying, a very worrying and disappointing development. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Right, can I ask the council to receive this annual report, please? Thank you. Item twelve is the statement of the return officer and this item is purely for informational only and to note. Can we note it, please? Thank you.
Chair, sorry, could I just, sorry, Chair, just one point. Unless I'm not aware of another reform resignation, it does say Horden by-election on the paper rather than Benfield side by-election at the top. And I don't think the Horden councillors who I think are here today are resigning anytime soon unless they want to tell us otherwise.
Thank you. It's an error. We will correct that. Thank you.
It's always nice to have somebody smart in the audience, isn't it? Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Can I ask the Director of Legal and Democratics? Oh, sorry. Oh, item thirteen, motions of notice. Right, so can I ask the Director of Legal and Democratic Services to outline the procedure, please?
Thank you, Chair. So the usual rules of debate apply. So movers of motions have five minutes to speak and seconders and other speakers have three minutes. Members may only speak once on a motion, other than the mover, who has a three-minute right of reply. If an amendment is moved and seconded, the debate is on the amendment. Only one amendment may be moved and discussed at any one time and no further amendments may be moved until the amendment under discussion has been disposed of. If we get an amendment, we will display the amendment on screen and it will also be circulated to all members via email. Each member can speak once on an amendment, except for the mover of the original motion. They have a right of reply before the amendment is put to the vote, but may not otherwise speak on it. If, following the vote, the amendment is carried, it becomes the substantive motion and the original one falls away. If the amendment falls, the debate goes back to the original motion. When there is fifteen minutes left of the time allowed for motions, the Chair will confirm the number of people registered to speak at that point. No further registrations will be taken and we will work through those already registered until expiry of the time allowed. Thank you, Chair.
Chair, Chair, I would like to move a motion without notice, please. Normally, when we have motions, it tends to run past half an hour. The Constitution only allows for half an hour for motions. We have four motions. It's highly likely from past experience that we'll not get past the first one or the second one, perhaps. So I would ask that, so we can make sure that, for example, councillor Grimes's second motion can actually be debated, that we suspend standing orders to allow us to debate for longer than thirty minutes. Thank you, Chair.
A second, please.
Begging that, Chair.
Thanks very much.
Chair, we don't wish to extend the time for motions.
Do we have a second for that?
Seconded.
No, we don't, we don't need, we don't need that to be seconded, but that does indicate dissent in the room. So rather than seek agreement from the floor, it would be put the motion without notice to a vote, which we can now do.
Chair, could we have a name for it on that, please? Got the sufficient numbers, thank you.
So just bear with the team whilst they load that vote into the system. The buzzer will sound when the voting is open. You will vote one in favour to extend the time and two to vote against the extension of time, three to abstain.
The vote is now open.
Chair, point of explanation, please?
Here, Chair, just a question for the Head of Legal and Democratic Services. I might mistake in this, but I remember when I first opened the paperwork that the order of the motions was different, i.e. the incinerator motion was at the top. Have I just misread something or did, no?
No, the motions are presented in the order in which they were received by the team. So councillor Grimes's motion was first and then councillor Steads was second.
Councillor? If anyone can close the vote now, please? As regards the motion to extend the time for councillor Grimes's motion, we have four, it's twenty-five votes and against sixty-one votes. So the motion falls and the time will not be extended. Thanks very much. Can I now invite councillor Grimes to move his first motion, please?
Thank you very much, Chair. I stand today to move the motion to rescind the climate emergency declaration made on the twentieth of February, twenty nineteen and to instead ask this council to declare a County Durham care emergency, recognising the unique challenges that we face in both raising council tax and also our send provision some of the most vulnerable people in our communities. I noticed at the start, actually, of proceedings today that there was a lot of chitter-chatter between the Lib Dems and the Labour Party. I even spot the Tory and a Green. Some might say rarer than hen's teeth. I would never be so impertinent. But I see the seeds of a coalition forming on this council. It's a coalition, my friends.
Chairman, on a point of order, on a point of order, this is going through the motion.
Against, against the people of County Durham, making us both colder and poorer.
Councillor, councillor Grimes, please, please, please. Thank you, councillor Shuttworth. Thanks for that. Councillor Grimes, you'll need to move your motion. Do we have a second, please? Sorry, sorry, my fault. Right, can I just put you back on subject, please?
Hey, hey, it takes more than that to shut me up, Chair. Look, what I would say is, as a former news broadcaster, I could see the seeds of a coalition forming and it's going to be one for our residents to watch. Because I would argue, my friends, that actually this is a coalition against the residents of County Durham, actually advocating to make us both colder and poorer. I have here in my possession a Lib Dem leaflet. I have a Lib Dem leaflet that came through a door. It has the former leader of the council, Amanda Hoffgood, and Bob Wills.
This is not relevant to the motion.
I'm speaking about the motion.
The head of Legal and Democratic Services will say that.
I'm speaking about the motion, anti-democratic. You love the election.
Excuse me, this is about the motion, not you, the motion.
It is, it is, it is missing there.
Yeah.
Desperate.
Have to take an advice. Regarding your councillor Shulworth, actually councillor Grimes was back on subject, and if I could ask councillor Grimes to continue regarding his debate regarding this motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much Chair. I again rise to actually move my motion, and hopefully I won't be interrupted this time. But I have in my possession, my friends, a Lib Dem leaflet that came through the doors of residents in County Durham from the former leader of the council, Amanda Houghgood, and we've got councillor Mark Wilkes there as well. And it says, "The Lib Dems defend send children from Reform Party councillors." I put it to this council that actually it's the Reform Party defending our send kids from Lib Dem councillors. An opposition coalition that seeks to make our residents both colder and poorer. Shame, shame, shame. What I would say, colleagues, is that actually we mustn't mince words about any of this, and as you know, I'm not one to do that. The twenty nineteen climate emergency was a Lib Dem feel-good motion, chasing net zero rainbows whilst the likes of China belch out coal more than Sauron's Mordor. Durham's cut emissions, the country's cut emissions fifty-seven per cent since nineteen ninety. Council operations are a measly blip compared to international emissions. We're leaving our residents less well off, for nothing, for no return. Just yesterday in Parliament, Esther McVey asked one of our Labour colleagues's pals, the Secretary of State for Energy, Ed Miliband, three simple questions about net zero. She asked about the cost, he couldn't say. She asked who pays, he waffled. She asked about the temperature impact, complete silence. And I'm afraid to say that the opposition and the former administration had much the same. It was all about feeling good around the dining tables of those who can afford to take on such a burden. And I'm afraid our residents and the residents I speak to, who open their energy bills with a panic stricken across their face, simply cannot. The National Audit Office calls it unsustainable, right? Certainly a target of twenty twenty would be, which is what they had this council signed up to. And that, my friends, I would argue, is putting it mildly. The previous administrations eye-watering borrowing, for example, that would have, you know, left us actually trying to find the money for send kids, doing that alongside a target by twenty thirty, I think would put us in an impossible situation. A truly, truly impossible situation.
One minute councillor Grimes.
So what I would say, my friends, is maybe if we need to raise a bar or two, we could ask the people outside to pay for tickets next time. They are, of course, all friends with members of the opposition. So I put it to you in summation that actually Chair, we on this side of the chamber, we do seek to declare that a real care emergency that's devouring our kids and coffers in tandem. I call now, in moving this motion, for my colleagues to back me on this, and to actually say that we are done with expensive virtue signalling try, and we care instead about our residents. I call now on councillor Allison to second the motion.
Thanks very much councillor Grimes.
Thank you Chair, I second the motion and I reserve the right to speak.
Thanks very much councillor. I see we have a list of people who would like to speak on the motion. And I would like to call on councillor Lindsay Fox to speak please.
Thank you Chair. Chair, councillors, this motion is not about climate versus care. It is about telling the truth to the people of County Durham transparently and with courage. The previous administration focused on the climate emergency, which showed a focus on net zero roads, EV charges and solar panels. Targets were raised above and beyond the national ambition. But that same success is why now is the time to rescind the emergency, keep it as a priority. But the truth is, this council has been crippled by the significant and sharp increases in the cost of care for our most vulnerable: children, the elderly and those with additional needs. The fact is that just over sixty per cent of this council's net budget is spent on care, and this is only going up, leaving the council to operate on less than forty per cent for the rest of our services. The people of County Durham deserve to know this. Looked after children, placement costs have increased by two hundred and eighty-five per cent over the last five years, with no additional funding from government to help meet those costs. Spending on special educational needs and disabilities has rocketed since twenty eighteen nineteen, fueling a cumulative deficit against the grant we received to fund this service, set to hit thirty-eight million by the end of March twenty twenty-six, and a staggering hundred and fourteen million by twenty twenty-nine. This one hundred and fourteen million cumulative deficit by twenty twenty-nine would simply wipe out our reserves by that point and force us to declare a section one one four notice. Our vulnerable residents and their families deserve a system that is not overstretched and broken. They deserve a system where we are not struggling to provide enough send provision, help or preventative support. We cannot leave our most vulnerable behind because this council is afraid to speak up. The people of our county deserve to not only know why services have been cut historically, but as a council, we have to find an additional forty-five million in savings just to continue the status quo between twenty-six, twenty-seven and twenty-eight, twenty-nine, based on what the previous council approved as a medium-term financial plan in February twenty-five.
Just one minute.
We are at the limits of what is possible, and the reality is one bad wind to spike an flu or illness could push this council close to the edge. This motion is not symbolic, it's a warning and a call for action. Declaring a care emergency will be the first of its kind in the country, but hopefully not the last. Because here in County Durham, we've never been afraid to stand up when something is wrong. And we need to be calling out now, so our voices are heard nationally, that there is a problem with the funding to County Durham from government, and that the fairer funding formula does not go far enough. As a county, we have a long history of challenging a national system that doesn't understand the realities of life in our communities. County Durham has never been afraid to say what needs to be said, and we must stand again. This motion is a line in the sand. It says that we see the crisis. We acknowledge the impossible decisions that have been made to date and those that will come without intervention. So we call on other councils to join us, to stop pretending, stop renaming budget lines, and to shout loudly that send provision and care funding from the government is inadequate.
Time, thanks very much, thanks very much for your passionate speech. Thank you very much. I now call on councillor Andrew Husband to speak please.
Thank you Chair. So just to set the scene, you are now working with a council that states facts, not fiction. We are data-driven, driven by common sense. I want to give you a little bit of a summary from the Oxford Language English Dictionary, and it's the definition of the word "emergency", "A serious, unexpected, often dangerous situation requiring immediate action." I'll leave that with you. Another definition, or quote, I would like to follow up with, "The definition of insanity is doing the same thing again as per the previous administration and expecting different results." So without stealing the thunder from my colleagues, I've got some commentary to leave with you. So let's talk net zero technology, lithium mining. For every tonne of lithium provided, produced on hard rock mining, fifteen tonnes of CO2 are released. The CO2 production continues in the manufacturing process, distribution, installation and the end of life of renewable technologies. We have already reached out to the CEO of Weirdale Lithium to discuss this very subject, proactively looking at ways to put Durham at the forefront of the power source for solar technologies, whilst reducing its environmental impact. Now we want to talk about climate change in County Durham. During the Roman occupied era, not far away from County Durham, around forty-five AD, there is evidence of Roman vineyards along Hadrian's Wall. I want to bring this to your attention, this is because the Roman period in Britain is known for having a relatively warm climate, which would have been conducive to growing grapes. Mind how the climate has changed, Aaron. Another fact, not quite a fun fact unfortunately, but taking in the book produced by authors Professor Tim Burt and Dr Stephen Burt, Durham Weather and Climate since eighteen forty-one. Research confirms that there has been a mean average temperature increase since the decade eighteen fifty-one eighteen sixty of one point six two degrees to date. The book also references the Great Flood of seventeen seventy-one. Heavy rain in the November of that year led to the three arches of the Elved Bridge being washed away and the city's corn mill badly damaged. It was only yesterday we actually met with hydro cells to look at weather, water harvesting, recycling technology for our Morrison-Busty facility. We can see that we need to invest...
One minute councillor.
I'll cut to the chase. In this room, please raise your hand if you have upgraded your cooking appliances to induction, invested in solar, invested in battery storage, has underfloor heating, has invested in poly bead cavity wall insulation, has invested in an EV charging point at home. So it seems the leader of the council is doing more for the opposition when it comes to protecting our environment. I have invested in solar, only to bear the likes of the... Anyway, one final note, the North East has two point three per cent contributed to the UK's one per cent approx of global CO2 emissions. County Durham is thirty-three per cent of the two point three per cent of the one per cent, roughly naught point naught naught seven per cent. I rest my case.
Thank you councillor, thanks for that. I now call on councillor Joe Quinn, oh sorry. Just to remind people, we have fifteen minutes left of the time allotted, and we have thirteen members registered to speak. No further registrations to speak will be accepted, and we will invite those registered to speak in order until the expiry of the time limit. I will then look to wrap up the debate. I now call on councillor Joe Quinn to speak please.
Thank you Chair. Chair, I would like to offer my full support for this motion. It seems this day and age, Chair, everything is indeed a crisis or an emergency. Well Chair, in my humble opinion, if everything is an emergency, nothing is. I don't actually think anybody is against the care emergency Chair, but some of us... Excuse me Chair, I mean, we are all quiet while they speak, I would expect the same courtesy back if that's okay. I don't think any of us...
Thanks for reminding this councillor Quinn. If you can just whisper a bit quieter please, and less theatrical. Thank you.
Thank you Chair, I don't think anyone is actually against a care emergency, but some of us clearly are against a climate emergency. Let's not forget the fact that the residents of County Durham voted overwhelmingly for Reform UK, and we have a mandate that is very clear and very simple. We aren't anti-clean energy Chair, but we are anti-net zero at a huge cost to the taxpayer. Let's take for example, over four million pounds to convert our fleet to electric vehicles. That number did not factor in lost man-hours due to charging during the work hours. Now Chair, you could argue that these vehicles are left to charge overnight. I would accept that, however, when I visited one of our depots recently, I asked that very question. The answer I got was, "The range on a vehicle is about a hundred miles, and our workers do around two hundred miles within the day." I'll let you do the math Chair. Higher lease rates than diesel vehicles with rising costs of energy makes these types of deals totally uneconomical. But here, it fits the net zero agenda. And Chair, let's not forget the electric bin wagon, which costs twice as much as a regular diesel one, and since twenty twenty-one has done seventeen thousand one hundred and forty-one kilometres, while a diesel one has done sixty-six thousand eight hundred and forty-three kilometres. That's a total difference of forty-nine thousand seven hundred and two kilometres. Chair, I fully support this motion, and I ask all members to think carefully before their vote. Vote for common sense, vote for this motion.
Thank you councillor Quinn. I now call on councillor Mark Wilkes.
Thank you Chair. I think just by way of correction, it's more than fifty-seven per cent what we've cut carbon emissions by councillor Grimes. Chair, I'd like to move an amendment, and that amendment is to remove paragraph one of the motion, and it's for the following reasons. This council's action on tackling climate change has helped save over thirteen million pounds in the last year alone. Stopping work on tackling the climate emergency would risk the loss of external funding. Stopping investor save projects being led by our officers risks less money to invest in social care. This is not an either-or. This is the financial reason why we need to remove paragraph one. So for any councillor wanting to scrap the climate declaration on financial grounds, don't. You're going to make things worse. You know, a report before the elections in May showed that fifty-four per cent of voters who plan to vote for Reform UK support policies to stop climate change and to put in place targets to keep the UK on track. Not everyone who voted for you voted for this. I'd like you to read to you what one young person, Poppy, sent me. "As a young person and proud resident of Durham, I'm calling on you to uphold the council's climate emergency declaration. To me, this declaration represents the council's care for young people's futures, for my future. Rescinding it would ignore the voices of thousands of scientists, but perhaps more importantly, it also ignores the people of Durham. Every young person I know is worried about climate change. We're terrified of what our future might look like if we don't act. Even in my short lifetime, I've noticed the changes around me, the dwindling wildlife, the heatwaves and the floods. And it's not just young people. A twenty twenty-five report found that over seventy per cent of people in the North East are concerned about climate change. Rescinding this declaration would therefore be a failure by this council to represent the feelings of Durham residents, and I hope that as a council, you will choose to continue protecting young people's futures." That was Poppy. There's tens of thousands of young people in this county who don't want you to do this. "Chair, as all new councillors will see in the coming months, the issues we face in social care have nothing whatsoever to do with climate change. I find councillor Grimes's conflation of the climate emergency with the financial pressures we face in children's social care to be quite frankly cynical and insulting. If not for the environment, then on economic grounds, please support this amendment and stand up for all your residents, and especially those who are too young to vote today, but will be old enough to vote one day." Councillor Jonathan Elmer will second the amendment.
Councillor.
Thank you Chair, councillor Jonathan Elmer, Brandon Division, very happy to second this amendment. And I want to make it clear that I support the part of the motion that calls for a care emergency declaration. However, reform of table a motion that conflates the climate emergency and the care emergency, both are clearly important, but this motion forces two issues to be addressed with a single vote. The councillors can't vote to oppose the scrapping of the climate emergency declaration without also opposing a care emergency. So, following the advice of the vast majority of the planet's scientists, Durham County Council declared the climate emergency in twenty nineteen. In fact, many councils across the country have done the same, and the broader movement has demonstrated that councils can set an example, they can make a difference. But this motion signals the reverse. It says this is not an issue for Durham County Council. It's a head in the sand approach, it's a don't look up approach. And of course, to abandon efforts to address the causes of the climate emergency signals to the oil industry that they can progress with business as usual. And what is business as usual? Well, without global intervention, this will mean a catastrophic three to five degree rise in global temperature by twenty-one hundred. We haven't seen that sort of a rise for about twenty million years. So this motion takes us back well beyond the Stone Age. But what difference can Durham make on the international stage when the likes of the USA, China and India emit so much more? Well, you should know that this year, for the very first time, one of those countries, China, has registered an annual decrease in carbon emissions, frankly giving hope to us all. Signals are important and can make a difference. So what's happening here and now? The Met Office have just reported that heatwaves are now much more likely, and this will impact on the most vulnerable in society, in particular older people and children.
Minute councillor.
The UK Parliament Climate Change Committee has recently reported high winds, unseasonal... Sorry, that we're woefully unprepared for the future impacts of climate change. So flooding, high winds and unseasonal heatwaves. Chaosic weather is also impacting on food production as fields become waterlogged or impacted by drought, and that's what's happening here in County Durham. And this motion signals to the oil industry that they can progress with business as usual. Signals are important. Finally, I want to touch on the economic impact of this signal. Durham County Council commissioned a green economy report in twenty twenty-three. So we know low carbon goods and services, that sector across County Durham is worth an estimated one point seven billion. an estimated 1.7 billion. This includes 600 businesses employing over 11,000 people. The green economy is growing at six times the speed of the mainstream economy. The Durham County Council has made a cumulative 60 million savings through energy efficiency measures.
Thanks very much councillor, I'm afraid you've timed so-
So I urge you to support this amendment, thank you folks.
We have councillors who were actually registered to speak before the amendment was introduced. The debate is now on the amendment. So if you wish to speak regarding the amendment, you will remain in the queue and will keep going until the time runs out. Yep. So the next one we have on the list is councillor Hope.
Point of order Chair.
Carry on.
Sorry Chair, I thought we'd agreed we wouldn't go beyond the 30 minutes. We started at 11:11. Thank you Chair.
Chair, we started on my time at 11:18, working off the clock up here. I've written it down, 11:18, 11:33 is the 15 minute mark and 11:48-
I wrote 11:11 on my laptop.
Well, thanks for that councillor, but I'll work on Helen time, thank you. Councillor Hope?
Thank you Chair, I wasn't planning on speaking after councillor Shuttleworth's outcry. I would invite councillor Shuttleworth-
Excuse me, that was a point of order, it wasn't an outcry, point of order and I'm entitled to do that, thank you.
Yeah, what I just want to say is, would councillor Shuttleworth just, you know, think about driving into County Hall on a daily basis in his diesel guzzling van for his claiming of expenses? Also, the mining of materials-
Chair, on point of order, will you just put this man in his place please? That is not relevant. What I do has nothing to do with anybody in here.
Can I just say that it's really inappropriate to actually say put this man in his place? We should all hate, we debate, not hate.
Councillors, can we just take a bit of a step back here? We're trying to debate a point and it's an important point and we're trying to show the public that we are really serious about trying to sort out County Durham's issues and help the people. So just calm down and we'll just carry on with the debate and regarding this amendment. Thanks very much. Councillor Hope?
Thank you Chair, the mining of lithium material, sorry, for lithium batteries is rife with child slavery and is well documented across the globe, particular in Africa. The production of solar panels is also widely documented for its use of child and adult slave labour in China. The UK was instrumental in abolishing the slave trade with William Wilberforce spearheading the parliamentary campaign and Thomas Clarkson gathering evidence and organising public opinion campaigns. Earl Greer, who was the British Prime Minister at the time in 1833, had his government pass the Slavery Abolishing Act of 1833. Now I do not believe in child or adult slave labour and I believe the guys on this side of the House also do not believe in adult and child slave labour. I believe the guys on the other side must believe in adult and child slave labour because they have not took that into consideration. Also, the, of the social care, we were approached a couple of weeks ago from Villa Real School, Villa Real School is a send school, that school was asking for £22,000 to support that school. That school is in councillor Rooney's ward and all of us, as Reform councillors, the six of us have pledged £2,444 into that school. If this is not an emergency where we are having to go into our local access funds to support these kids, I don't know what is.
One minute by the way councillor. Councillor Boron, do you want to speak?
The welfare of children and young people must be one of the highest priorities for every councillor in this chamber, especially here in County Durham, where I collectively grew up with parents. Before my election as Durham County councillor, I volunteered to fill banks across the country, county and remain committed to the continuing this work, witnessing firsthand the remarkable generosity of our residents. People offer their time, money and support to assist vulnerable members of our community, including disabled individuals, homeless, families and working people. I've seen the devastating effects of poverty on men, women and children in our area, many in urgent need of support. I also volunteer in the special education needs and disability departments. As a parent of children attending the same school, I have a deep understanding of the daily challenges they face. While I acknowledge that safeguarding our children requires careful financial planning, it is crucial that we prioritise this issue. The future of our nation rests with the wellbeing of our children. Throughout my time representing the district, I am proud to serve Chiltern Ward. I've heard very little from residents regarding climate emergency. During our election campaigns and surgeries and in meetings, residents are constantly express concerns about the pressing issues of cost of living and poverty. It's clear that these represent the foremost priorities for the people we represent. Many members in this chamber will likely agree that the issues facing our communities, partly in terms of poverty, demand our immediate attention and action. One group that deserves particular recognition and support are our kingship carers. These individuals play a vital role in ensuring that children and young people remain within the family units.
One minute councillor.
Which research has shown provides significant long-term benefits. Kingship carers need not only our recognition but also a tangible support both to themselves and the children they care for. The current concerns of our residents are not centered on abstract issues, they're focused on the immediate challenges of making ends meet and long-term effects of poverty on their children's futures. The people who elect us have done so with the expectation that we will prioritise these needs, not the interests of large corporations and hedge funds seeking to profit from exploiting our communities and our environment. Chair, I'm closing this statement and I fully support councillor Grimes's motion and our executive sentiment, I want child poverty zero, not energy zero.
Thanks love councillor. We have run out of time, we will now move to wrap up this debate. Councillor Grimes, you have a right to reply to the amendment, would you like to exercise that before we move to a vote?
Thank you Chair, I will. On councillor Wilkes's point there, the clarification on emissions, he is of course right and doing my job for me, I rather think actually, in highlighting the progress County Durham has made on net zero, 64% is DCC's share. Now, is it an emergency then, if we've reduced it by 64%? Would you say to a patient, that's 64% better, that they're on death's door? I don't think you would, would you? I think people need to catch up and I'm rather expecting now that councillor Wilkes might be defecting to our cause after that helpful, helpful intervention.
Point of personal explanation, that will never happen.
Oh, well.
All right, all right.
The Green councillor in second in the amendment mentioned there that 20 million years, that's the last time you have to go back since things were this bad in his language. Well, it's funny enough my friends, at 20 million years, we'll all be running around in loincloths and living in caves if they get their way. We have made sufficient savings. Solar panels scrapped, vanity projects on top of our leisure centres, EV binwagons that cost double the price, thank you, I'm losing my voice now, EV binwagons, this is like my Theresa May moment. EV binwagons double the price of diesel ones, which I think actually is not the priority of County Durham, where actually we just want our bins collected and we want it done at a fair price, not to be asked to put up council tax so that councillor Wilkes and his clan could actually feel good about themselves by an expensive binwagon. The facts of the matter are with us-
A personal explanation, that binwagon was bought before the joint administration took over, it probably will over its lifetime actually save the money of the extra cost.
Did I cancel it councillor Wilkes?
Did I cancel it?
Yeah, did you cancel it?
Waste money, I don't do that.
Councillors, councillors.
Very clearly, very clearly.
If you want to carry on the humour please.
The facts of the matter are that we need to resist this amendment, we need to vote for the amendment, the motion as it was proposed, because we need to protect our communities. We need to put children over carbon, so-
One minute councillor Grimes.
I think we should have a named vote as well Chair, if I could just ask for that. Thank you very much.
We've definitely got 10 people, thank you.
I'm losing my voice.
So, we will go to the vote, which is on the amendment, I stress, we are going to
We haven't opened the vote yet, if you wait for the buzzer. So that is your vote open, it's one in favour of the amendment, two against, three to abstain. If you press the wrong button, pressing the right button will correct your vote and if you do have a problem with your handset at this point, please do raise it in the air.
We're going to close the vote now if everybody's took the time to vote. As regards councillor Wilkes's amendment, we have 24 for his amendment, 61 against his amendment, one abstention, so the amendment falls, the amendment falls, so we go back to the original motion. Now councillor Allinson reserved her right to speak, would you like to exercise that right to speak before we ask councillor Grimes to give his right to reply?
Yes please, thank you Chair.
Thank you.
So I think I'm going to take a bit of a different approach after hearing everybody, I'm going to actually tell you what Reform are going to do. So we're going to actively explore looking at new innovative low-carbon energy solutions such as deep geothermal, data servers at leisure centres and we can utilise the heat, solar panels over car parks, not on valuable farmland. I think councillor husband touched on this before, so we're going to be working with the North Pennines National Landscape, so we're going to be growing moss, we're going to be growing plants at the Morrison-Busty and this is going to enable the expansion of peat bogs and wetlands. These globally capture over 500 billion tonnes of CO2 annually. Again, you touched on this, we're looking at hydro cell schemes to prevent flooding and capture rainwater. We're running tree planting programmes throughout the county, including a new 1,200 acre forest and this will capture up to 12,000 tonnes of CO2 annually as well. Alongside this, we're looking at a biochar system, this creates a green energy source, captures carbon and it also produces a valuable by-product at the end of it. We'll be creating more wildflower meadows throughout County Durham, especially within urban areas which act as vital food source, habitat for pollinators like bees and butterflies. We're going to reduce the use of weed killer, allowing hedge rows and shrubs to flourish and create little pockets of biodiversity. We're looking at setting up environmental projects, working with charities and schools, for example allotment schemes for mental health and teaching self-sufficiency. So all of this can be achieved at a fraction of the cost and it saves the taxpayer millions of pounds while still looking after the environment on a more ecological level. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Grimes, you've got anything you want to add?
Chair, just to say from the off, we would like to request a named vote for our motion.
Yeah, thanks for that, is there anything you want to add in the right to reply?
I will, it's just to reiterate Chair, the send issue here, you know, the information that we received from one of our finance officers, you know, the spend starting at 58.5 million in 1819, that overspend of 7.4 million back then, by 2023 to 2024, you've got that going up to 91.8 million against an 89.9 million grant. We are facing a black hole of the kind that even Rachel Reeves couldn't make up. The facts of the matter is, the facts of the matter is that this is completely unsustainable, it is a complete dereliction of duty to overlook this and not take this moment to reprioritise our council's focus on our most vulnerable communities and they do not, in my opinion, include subsidised industries. Durham's 119 kids per 10K and K, the North East average is 114, we are above the North East average, we are certainly above England's average of 70. I repeat what I said earlier, the National Audit Office said that this is financially unsustainable and we are facing in this council a deep reckoning if we do not deal with it right this instant. I mean, their idea of net zero rights is to triple cost electric bins as I mentioned earlier, decade payback solar diverted from early help, they were proposing putting solar panels on top of the Louisa Centre where I'm from in Stanley. I'll tell you what, it wouldn't last two minutes, there'd be a pension, a pigeon, a pensioner, I nearly said there, a pigeon burrowed within it within moments and then we have to pay of course for the costs of these things. We need to rescind my friends, the 2019 guff, we need to declare a care emergency, we need to review every piece of expenditure, we need to shunt our pennies to our vulnerable children.
One minute councillor.
And Newton Europe looked into all of this Chair, this isn't coming from me, this isn't coming from Reform, this isn't come from what they might call a right-wing tabloid, this is coming from independent consultants who have looked at the council's books and determined that actually we are in a totally unsustainable position. So the choice before us my friends is actually, do we go with performative gesturing politics, virtue signaling, or do we go for common sense? Do we prioritise burns over bluster? Do we actually explain to people in my ward in Anfield Plain why they're actually waiting goodness only knows how long for some send support and instead the council is funding loss-making solar panels on top of their local community centres? We need to vote yes, we need to vote for the motion, we need to ditch the failed consensus of the tired opposition politics next to us here and we need to put Durham's young first. Reform delivers this day and every day.
So, so if you can please, we're now going to go to the vote, if you can prime your machines.
Councillor Grimes has already asked for when it's been recorded.
Sorry.
Councillor Grimes has already asked for when it's been picked up.
Yeah. Yeah. Councillor Hunt, we actually have already asked for a recorded vote, so it's okay. Councillor Grant, that's fine. You now have time to vote, please, please vote. Right. One is for the motion, two is against and third is for an abstention. We're now going to close the vote. Thanks very much. Regarding the motion, we have four, 62, against seven and 17 abstentions. So the motion passes. This concludes the time for motions on notice. The remaining motions will be carried forward to the next meeting unless withdrawn beforehand. Thanks very much.
Chair, can I just ask that, hello? Hello, then just to give you time there to see me. I just want to ask that, is it possible? My motion was actually time sensitive. It was the 18th of July and was wanting the Secretary of State to be written to. Is it possible I can speak with the leader of the council to arrange a letter still be drafted and sent to the Secretary of State concerning the concerns that we have around the incinerator itself? And would he agree that, obviously, we didn't extend the time, which has been everyone's choice?
If you can pick that up outside of the meeting with councillor husband, please. Just speak from outside.
Chair, I'm happy to come in, but yes, obviously we can... I mean, we're a victim of this timing as well with our other motions, so we're all on the same board here and happy to pick this up afterwards.
Thank you, that was the answer I was requesting. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, councillor husband.
So, we are on to item 14, which is questions from members. And we have received one question for the meeting from councillor Alex Nail. Councillor?
Thank you, Chair. Given that unaccompanied asylum-seeking children are an extremely vulnerable group of young people in our communities, I was wondering if the cabinet member would now answer the question that was left unanswered at the cabinet meeting last week. Will all children, including unaccompanied asylum-seeking children, be treated equitably so that all children can get the best start in life, regardless of their background? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Can I invite councillor Hunt, the cabinet portfolio holder for children and young persons services, to respond to the question? Councillor Hunt.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to thank councillor Neil for his question. And I set out in my response at the cabinet meeting last week, the administration is committed to improving the lives of children and young people in the county. Personally, I think I demonstrated earlier that I'm passionate and at times very emotional about the children in our county. And that means all of the children. We take our corporate parenting responsibility seriously and for all our children in care and as a member of the Court on Parenting Power, councillor Neil, we will have the opportunity to support this and work together. And I'd also like to take you on your offer for a coffee and a chat. That would be lovely. Thank you.
Councillor Nail, councillor Nail, if you've got any supplementary question, this is the time to give it.
No, no, thank you, Chair. Thank you, councillor Hunt, for the response.
Thank you. That concludes today's business for the council meeting. And I would like to thank everyone for taking part. And to the members of the public and media who watched this meeting, thanks very much for your behaviour. Thanks very much.